I'd like to call the meeting in order, roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Hogan?
Present.
Mr. Zawada?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway?
Here.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy? Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Ms. Deroff?
Present.
Mr. Penarello?
Here. So, Roger, please leave and send a moment of silence. There was no previous executive session.
At this time, Mrs. Boyer, are you out there? All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Boyer. I'm the communications specialist for the district, and I'd like to welcome you to Boyertown Area Senior High School. Shortly, you'll be hearing from the high school's administrative team, so I took this chance to welcome everyone. I have the pleasure this evening of introducing you to Amy Muzapapa. She is the executive director of the Foundation for Boyertown Education. Recently, the foundation celebrated 10 years of service to the district. So she's got a video to share, and then some show and tell, and some board participation coming your way. So I'm excited for you to see what's coming. Thank you. So I just wanted to run through a little bit about what the Foundation for Boyertown Education is, since not everyone is aware of what we do for students. Do we have a clicker, Mike? Are you my clicker? Okay. I'm gonna go through pretty quickly, yeah. This is just... So we are comprised of a board of directors that represent local business owners, nonprofit leaders, and other community members, all volunteers that commit their time and talent to the foundation. This is just a little bit about our mission statement and why we were founded. We foster enriched educational experiences for the students of the Boyertown Area School District by providing grants and enhanced learning opportunities, which I'm gonna show you a little bit of shortly. So the Boyertown Education Foundation is not a unique nonprofit. There are nonprofits such as this all over the country, and it was founded based on the local education foundation concept, started generally in college-level education organizations, set some guidelines for how it is administered, and allowing them to branch beyond what is considered standardized curriculum, providing opportunities for higher engagement for kids, and allowing them to develop some of their leadership skills beyond what's expected of them. The way we are organized, our funding sources are primarily private donations, but we also do some fundraising events. We run the graduation signs each year, where you can purchase a sign personalized with your graduate's name to display your bear pride on your front lawn. We also run a cornhole tournament and a golf outing, and both of those events are a lot of fun. We're always looking for participants and volunteers. So if you're interested in getting involved with a really fun organization, please reach out to me. But as you can see, I wanted to show, really, the significance of the individual donor in terms of how we are funded. So a little bit about the partnership with Boyertown Area School District. We have some strengths here in Boyertown in that our school district is a high-performing school system. They are ranked 88 out of 750 high schools in Pennsylvania from U.S. News, and we have a 92% graduation rate, which is actually higher than the national average. Our shared beliefs: We exist to support students, so it's all about the kids. We have pride in our school and our community, and we believe that Boyertown Area is a great place to live and raise a family. And we do consider ourselves to be bridge builders, engaging with the community and local businesses. Again, that's how we get our funding. We like to tell the stories of the impact we have on students' lives so that we can get greater engagement from our community. One of our mottos is "Strong schools strengthen communities", and we believe that to be true, whether you're talking about the real estate market or the job market, or even just community volunteerism. If you have a strong school district that really draws in people, and it makes them want to get more involved in their community. And I just threw in some pictures so you could see some examples. These are other fundraising. We call this spirit fundraising. It doesn't really raise a lot of money, but it does raise a lot of fun. Gifts of gratitude is something we started doing last year, and this is if you're looking for the perfect teacher gift for holidays, because we all know teachers get a lot of mugs, and pens, and candles, and things like that. You can give them a gift of gratitude, and that is a donation to the foundation in their name with a special message. And that donation can be anything. It can be a dollar, it can be $5, whatever you want it to be. It's really the gesture of expressing that to your teacher. So we do hand-deliver those, and whenever possible and appropriate, we have the student get in the picture as well. That doesn't always work out, but we try. So that's just a lot of fun. So that's coming up. For any parents in the audience who are interested in looking into that, you can find those gifts of gratitude through our website. And also, we have the Wizards game coming up. Now, that is actually a pretty good fundraiser. We want to sell that one out. So save the day for January 20th, please. All right. Again, you're going to see a video in a few minutes talking about some of the grants that we funded. But we exist to support students, and the way we do that is by supporting teachers. So they will submit grants to us for things that are a little bit extra, and we will review it. And if it meets our guidelines, we will support that grant in partnership with the school district. And these are just some examples of things that we have sponsored. In 10 years, which we've just celebrated this year, we have provided more than $1 million in financial support to Boyertown Area students. So we're pretty proud of that. Okay. Again, we want to contact every student, every age, every ability, and make sure that they all have a positive impact from the foundation. This is just another example. We did courtyard renovations for the best program. There's just some science grants that we had done. The kids are actually growing some of their own food in the classroom, and then they get to eat it. So that's kind of fun in the elementary classrooms. Okay, so in this picture, you'll see some high school students wearing some VR goggles. We're gonna talk about that, because that's one of our newest foundation-funded programs, not just for the high school, but it's actually a program that will be available to all students of the Boyertown Area School District. And we're gonna do a little demonstration of that tonight, and we have a couple of different age group volunteers to help out with that. But the VR is pretty amazing, and I don't want to steal Mrs. Hester's thunder, because she was the grant recipient. But it's a... You can go anywhere, be anything, do anything. It's really amazing. But we'll get to that in a second. Keep going. Again, I touched on leadership and lifelong learners. If we can engage students and make them really love learning, then the curriculum stuff is just naturally gonna flow. But if anybody here is a parent, you know that the challenge is really getting them engaged. So we hope that with some of the things we can provide, that we are successful in accomplishing that. Okay, and there's my contact info, if anybody wants to reach out to me. We just have a couple minutes of video, and then we're gonna do the VR demo for you. I'm proud to be part of an organization that exists to support students. We are excited to share just a few of the many programs we've supported. Foundation for Boyertown Education was started with the purpose of making schools a little bit extra, providing funding for things that go beyond what is a budget for curriculum, providing innovation and opportunities to students to explore their interests and navigate career opportunities, thinking about whether they want to go on to a trade school beyond high school or attend college. The innovation that is provided by the programs we support can allow these students to make those decisions and figure out what resonates with them. We hope that seeing these grants in motion makes you feel good about your contribution to the Foundation for Boyertown Education. We are so grateful to our supporters. Without your help, we wouldn't be able to create these opportunities for students and for teachers. We've done amazing things over the past 10 years, and we look forward to what's to come. Together, we'll make big things happen for our students. The Foundation for Boyertown Education has been supporting students in the Boyertown Area School District since 2013. So I want to thank you for your time. I do have a little gift for each of the school board members up here. This is an ornament that was created by the middle school students using one of the cutters that we had gotten for them. So it's a laser engraver, and it just celebrates the 10th anniversary for the Foundation for Boyertown Education. And on the back of this is a QR code if you want to watch the video again. So can I have my helpers hand those out? One for each of the school board members. And at the end of the meeting, I do have some extras of these. If anybody else would want one, they're over there on the bookshelf when we're finished tonight. So I'm gonna hand this over now to Mrs. Hester. She is now the proud owner of the VR system. So she's gonna talk about that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I just first want to say thank you to the foundation for funding the virtual reality goggles. They also do a little bit of augmented reality. And I want to give you an experience, a virtual reality experience, that will give you an idea of how teachers can expand learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. I have some student helpers with me today from elementary, middle, and high school. So what they're gonna do is hand out the goggles to you in a moment. But first, I want to briefly explain what you're gonna do, if you choose to, when you put them on your heads. So... These are the goggles, and they have a handheld controller with them. So when you go to put them on your head, you also want to hold the controller in your hand. And what you're gonna notice is there's a button in the front, and you can click that button to hop to different places within the virtual reality environment. But there's also a joystick, and you can use the joystick as well to move around in the virtual reality environment. There are two buttons below the joystick. We won't need to use them today. You're going to, when you put the headsets on, be immersed into the prehistoric world. I recommend checking out the dinosaurs. Are you ready? Okay. When you do put them on your heads, you want to be careful with your head movements. You don't want to be moving your head around too much. It might make you nauseous. So be careful with that. It is a 360-degree environment, so you could turn around in your chair in a circle, or you can use the joystick to move around in the virtual reality environment. When you enter, you're gonna be presented with a hallway, and the hallways have doorways. So find a doorway that you'd like to enter by using the joystick. You might have to adjust the headset. Sometimes I find if you move it down a little bit, it's a little less blurry. You can certainly wear them with glasses if you would like to. I have found that it's... They work better if they actually are on your head strapped in. Sometimes it goes into sleep mode, because it thinks that you're not wearing them. Feel free to share what you're seeing. There are adjustable straps, so if it doesn't feel right on your head, you can adjust the strap. The last use of these with their raders, so they might be a little tight. Oh, yes, the asteroid. So I heard some things like I got lost in the ferns where the dinosaurs were. Someone saw an asteroid fall towards the earth. Someone saw the Sphinx. Thank you. All right. My student helpers are gonna come around and collect them from you. Thank you for trying them out.
I'd just like to thank the foundation and Mrs. Hester for being here tonight and for sharing this experience with all of us. So thank you for being here.
Mrs. Evans, did you want to come up and welcome everyone into the high school? Were we bypassing you? Are we going right to our Boyertown Legion? All right. All right. All right, Mr. Jim Comport, are you here? Come on up to the podium, please. Thank you. You can... I know the athletic director has something to say, so he can make his way a little bit closer, too. But thank you for being here tonight.
So my name is Jim Comport. I am president of the Boyertown Area Youth Baseball. This is Tracy Yergi. She is a board member and also our accountant. And we are here today to discuss the... We run the Boyertown American Legion baseball program, which uses the stadium during the summer. And we're here to discuss some changes that we're looking to make. We met with Mary Beth and Nick earlier this fall to discuss with them to make sure we were in compliance with our contract that we have with the school district. We're not looking to change the contract, but we wanted to make sure that we could do what we're thinking of doing. And she suggested we come in front of you guys and just kind of give you a brief update on what we're doing and where we're headed. Fortunately, we don't have a presentation or a movie, but I was wondering, Mrs. Hester, could we borrow those virtual reality glasses? Figure maybe we could all play a little game of baseball in the stadium so you guys can understand what it's like to play in that stadium and enjoy that. So it'd be great, but maybe someday we can actually do that. And so, as everybody knows, parents are spending a lot of money to put their players or their athletes through these travel programs, right? And baseball is no exception, right? Everybody's looking for that Division I scholarship and trying to get their kids into the best universities, right? And it's starting to impact Legion baseball program, which we run here in the summer months. And we need to make some changes, right? And so what we're looking to possibly do is maybe dip our toes into that travel baseball program, right? We still want to have an American Legion baseball program here. We still want to have a program for all the Boyertown students so that they can play baseball here in the summer as well as play for the high school. But the issue is, is some of our better players are leaving, right? They're not playing Boyertown baseball. They're leaving us and going to play for other teams outside of Boyertown. And we don't want that to happen, right? We are... We live and breathe Boyertown baseball, and we want to keep it here. So what we're looking to do is almost like a two-phased approach, right? In 2024, we're looking to maybe have host some travel baseball programs in the stadium, okay? You know, this way, one is there's a financial reward for us, but two is we also get to start establishing that Boyertown may be, you know, a place to play travel baseball. We'll take a look at that. We'll evaluate at the end of '24, and then we'll see about potentially fielding a team in 2025, right? What that means is we'll have a Boyertown baseball team, right, which only Boyertown Area School District's, you know, students can play on. But then there'd be a travel program, which would have to open up to everybody in the area, right? So it wouldn't just be Boyertown. It would be, you know, the better Boyertown players. But then also, it could be stuff, people from Owen J. Roberts, you know, Springfield, whatever they want to come from and play for us. But we still gotta, you know, we want to get through 2024 to figure out if that's something we can actually do. And so, you know, we approached Mary Beth and all that to make sure that, within our contract with the school district, we could do that, right? And I believe we, you know, we thought that, you know, reading the contract, that we could do that. And so we just wanted to, you know, kind of update you folks, give you a time to ask some questions for us, see if there's anything else. You know, what we're hoping to do is, you know, as we bring in maybe travel baseball and start to make more money, we can help, you know, contribute to the maintenance of the Bear Stadium, right? We know that's a big expense. We installed the sprinkler system this year from the excess money we had. We're looking at the paint in the grandstand, bringing that back to, you know, looking new again. And there are other, you know, types of improvements we'd like to do. Tracy, did I miss anything?
Yeah, no, that's... Because of the conversation, I was not certainly comfortable in saying certainly we can go ahead. And I did believe that this was something that needed to be presented to the board and for the board to be able to provide questions and, you know, really more or less give some direction as this something that we are looking to do or to support. So at this time, I would open it up to our board members to ask any questions that they might have with respects to what was here. Mr. Zawada, see that you have a question?
It's not really a question. It's a statement. I kind of went through what you went through. My daughter played softball. She probably played for the worst high school team going, Potts Grove, for four years, but she did get on a travel ball team. And I mean, we traveled California, New Mexico. Long story short, because of the exposure, she got a Division II scholarship. So it is important to get them in, because coaches from colleges just don't come to, you know, high school games unless they hear of a certain player, especially a pitcher or something. But now the exposure that the kids should get, and I don't have one on you, and it's a problem with you guys using the stadium, because you maintain it. And I'm sure if something happens, you'll fix it. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I think my only concern would be legal-wise with Mr. Sultanic. Is everything okay with that? I mean, I don't want us to go against a legal agreement.
I'd have to look at the agreement again candidly.
That would be my only concern, make sure that we're within our...
Absolutely.
Question as far as fundraising for traveling. What are you planning on doing with that, you know?
Well, we're not fundraising for travel per se, right? We're gonna host tournaments where other travel teams come in, and we can use that money to help improve the stadium, right? So the players fund the team in their entirety, right? They pay thousands of dollars, so you know, right, to do the program. So they basically pay for the coaches, right? And then they pay for all the tournaments that they enter. So we're looking to just make money for our program so that we can put it back into the stadium, which is, you know, getting older. But then, yeah, we're not... We're not gonna do any fundraising per se for those players. It's a travel program, and they fund it.
And you want to start this in '24 now?
We want to host tournaments in '24. We don't want to have a travel team. We have our Legion team, which will play in it, but it's not a travel team. It's still Boyertown School District, you know, players only.
Oh, I wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
I appreciate you thinking of our kids and taking the time out to find ways to keep them in.
Yes.
That's amazing. Thank you.
I will share the contract with Mr. Sultanic, and then I will be back in touch with you. It sounds to me like we're okay to move forward. It doesn't sound like anyone's opposed, as long as it meets the contract that...
Wonderful.
Yep, we have.
And let's keep this dialogue open, right? In case you guys have any questions, we're here.
Okay, perfect. I know that Mr. Palladino has just a little update for our fall sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for giving me a minute of your time. I just wanted to summarize our fall season. Our participation numbers. At the senior high, we had 186 boys and 183 girls. At East, 62 boys, 55 girls. And at West, 56 boys and 53 girls. So we were, you know, pretty level across the board there, which is good for, you know, our Title IX compliance and our disclosures. So everything there seems to be... We have good participation numbers. Our overall varsity record at the high school this fall was 79 and 60, so 79 wins, 60 losses. We had Pioneer Athletic Conference playoff appearances by field hockey, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls golf, and girls tennis. We had District One playoff appearances by field hockey, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls golf, and volleyball. We had a PIAA playoff appearance by field hockey, and we had a PIAA championship meet appearance in cross-country by Eva Montani, who's a 10th grader. She finished 82nd out of 237. Our social media, we are averaging about 12,500 hits a week. So we're getting good exposure for all of our student athletes through social media. We're looking to expand our YouTube and NFHS streaming platforms to give all of our teams more exposure, either during a livestreamed event or an on-demand recording. So, for example, Swimming is... Swims over at the Y. We could go over there, film it, and then put it on our YouTube page. We could go over there, film it, and then put it on our YouTube page so people could actually see it then. And we're coming up with ways to involve all of our students to show them that there are other things you can do. There are careers in athletics besides being on the court or the field. And lastly, I have an alumni spotlight here. Brooke Mullen, who's a 2013 alumni and was a member of our girls' basketball team, has been selected to compete in the Olympic Team Trials taking place in December with the ultimate goal of representing the United States at the 2024 Summer Olympics in boxing. So athletes at this level, they're responsible for their own travel, their own training, pretty much all their own personal expenses. So if anyone has, knows of any business or individual who would be interested in helping Brooke get sponsored and pay for her expenses, feel free, reach out to me, and I can put you in touch with Brooke. But thank you very much.
All right, next we have PFM Financial Advisors' presentation.
Good evening. My name's Brad Remig with PFM Financial Advisors. It was really neat to hear about the great things the foundation is doing and the neat things about baseball and all the athletic accomplishments. And now I'm going to bring the excitement of municipal bonds to the school board tonight. So we wanted to give the board a bit of an update on a refinancing. We're looking at pursuing for the district. All the documents seem to be in place to be able to move forward with this. We wanted to provide you with an update of where things stood and kind of next steps. So, and what we have up on the screen, and in your hand, that page number two, is basically... Oop, they're coming around. There we go. It's a very colorful interest rate chart showing you the direction of interest rates for an index that we follow. If you look at the bottom chart and move left to right, you'll notice that, as most people know, interest rates have been elevated and have been rising over the course of the year. We have seen over the last several weeks, we were planning for this months ago, but interest rates were high and there was really no savings by the refinancing. But if you'll notice on the chart on the bottom, you'll see the line going down. And really, over the last couple of weeks, we've seen the market get to a point where refinancing could save the school district money. So that's kind of where we are right now. And we're beginning that process with Patty and her team. So the next page, page number three, this shows you for the school district all the outstanding bonds that the district has. And it lists on the top half, all the principal and interest payments. And the bottom half, what that shows is it nets out any bonds that you qualify for PlanCon that happened in the past, okay? So some of the bonds get reimbursement from the state through PlanCon. The yellow bars, okay, the yellow, what you see on that is the 2015 bond. That's the one we're here talking about now, about potentially refinancing. As you get towards the very bottom of that, you'll notice there's a date there and it says call date. And that's April 1 of 2024. And under the federal tax laws, you can refinance bonds on a tax-free basis as soon as you get within 90 days of that call date. So we're kind of right there right now. So that's the first time you can, in other words, prepay without a penalty and refinance it. Bonds are a little different than mortgages. Mortgages you can typically pay off at any time, but with municipal bonds, there's a certain period of time typically that's needed for bondholders to give you the best interest rates. So we're at that point right now about refinancing it. We were contemplating doing something in advance of that on a different, on a taxable basis last year, but we decided to wait because there was really no savings and we wanted to try and take advantage of tax exemption as we got into the latter part of this year and the early part of 2024. You will also notice on this one, the payments on the bottom half are... The numbers, I should say, are a little lower than on the top, and that's because you do get some PlanCon reimbursement on that bond issue, and you would retain it. There's a process that we go through filing papers on behalf of the state. If you refinance, we make sure that the reimbursement percentages stay. The dollars go down a little bit because the payments go down, but you gain, get the same percentage of payments. So page number four, this basically gives you an idea of what's, what the savings look like here today. Many of you may know, today also was the release of what we call CPI or the Consumer Price Index. That's an, you know, that's an index that talks about inflation. And that, the data suggested that inflation is cooling, and therefore, interest rates dropped a fairly decent amount today. So since I sent these numbers at the end of last week, we might even be looking at something better. But right now, we're looking at a net savings of about $200,000. That's the column number four. And I want to point out that that's net of expenses. We always like to put the net numbers. It's net of this PlanCon, you know, because you're going to get a little bit less because the payments go down. It nets that out as well. And also, we're keeping the same term. We're not extending the debt at all. We're just going to replace the higher rates with lower rates and try and realize some savings here. Generally speaking, you'll notice in the box at the top, the savings are 2.12%. That means that that's how much savings divided by how many bonds you're refinancing. And generally speaking, we like to make sure that that's more than 2%, if at all possible. We want to make sure that that number, that's kind of a key guide for us to see where we are. So that's, that's kind of where we are right now. Where we're moving next is I'm working with, we're working with Patty and her staff, which are very responsive to get the information we need to provide to go get a credit rating and then produce what we call an official statement, which is a document that's given out to potential investors so they know a little bit about Boyertown Area School District. And then if that all goes well, we're hoping to potentially lock the rates as early as a couple of weeks before the holiday break. So that's where we are right now. And I thought, we thought it was important to let you know what was going on, let you know the potential savings here, and see if you had any questions. Sure.
We would bang the bond off. Okay, can that bond amount be increased if we're in need of...
It could be. It could be if you didn't need some funds. Right now, if you'll notice, another line at the top, it says bond proceeds. It's just under $10 million. And if you borrow less than $10 million in a calendar year, you typically get better interest rates. So, and for example, if we were bank-qualified under the $10 million, this would be eligible to be refinanced in about five years as opposed to the eight or nine that we had to wait on the other issue because it was a bigger transaction. So I know that was scintillating, but it is always nice to be able to refinance and save some dollars for the district. No. Just a... Okay, thank you. Be well. Good to see you.
Reports, BCIU, Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Panarello. Today, the BCIU held a COLA meeting. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I will send out all of the presentations and information to my colleagues. There are a few important points of advocacy within the documents I'm going to send you, but one thing that I did want to bring to everyone's attention is that there is a slide called Teacher Shortages. And this year, the state issued more emergency permits for teaching than they did actually teaching certificates. So I think that that is just an important piece of information for everyone to know as we move forward. But I will, there's a whole bunch of information in here, and I will send it all out. That's all. I appreciate it. Thanks.
BCTC, Mr. Rupp, the group.
Yes, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting because we had a meeting here at school on that date. But I will be attending the next meeting, which is in December 14th, our next meeting.
Program of Studies Committee Work Presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to bring my team up here as well. It's going to be a little... I'm usually a walker and presenter, so I apologize. Okay, so you all would have received in your board packets, I apologize, Dr. Bergy's standing up here. You all would have received a one-page kind of quick summary of everything that we're going to talk about this evening in the Program of Studies presentation, which is in front of you here. So thank you again for the opportunity to present. Our agenda this evening is to discuss, next slide, Mr. Stapp, please. Thank you. Course offerings, our proposed bell schedule for next year, and then also our updated graduation requirements. Mr. Sparks.
All right, good evening, Boyertown. Jared Sparks. With me, I have Dr. Bergy as well, the two other assistant principals at the high school. The data that you see in front of you right now shows the current number of AP courses, DE courses, honors-related studies, BCTC students, as well as internship types. And the column to the right is the number of students who participate in those types of classes. Please note that this does include students who maybe take three AP courses or multiple related studies courses. That's why the numbers to the right look as high as it does, but it does show you how many students are enrolled in an AP course, which is pretty significant. One thing to note is our BCTC numbers there have dropped a little bit this year. Enrollment throughout the county has increased tremendously, resulting in a more stringent requirement to get into the program. This year alone, we've seen about a 33% drop in students from Boyertown being accepted into that program. So it's something that we're working towards improving for next year. Mr. Stapp, please. Thank you. Here's a list of the courses that we're running right now. We have obviously a lot of different options for our AP students who are in there, some of our highest levels of math, the Calc AB, the Calc BC. It's really incredible the amount of offerings that the building provides for students. And here's some examples of those AP courses. The dual-romantic courses as well are listed here. We offer several of those, including the, some of them are listed twice. So if you look at the DE English Composition 1 and 2, that's two different courses listed together. But you also see some other really cool courses, such as the CPR and First Aid course. Dr. Bergy?
All right, thank you. I'm helping out with the internship now, since I started at the high school last year. We're pretty excited about the internship offerings that we have. These change year to year because it depends on interest from students. Ms. Natalie Warren goes out to placements and she observes students. So this is just a small selection of what we offer and what kids are being able to go out and see. We had two hospital visits last week, one from Tower Health and one from Reading Hospital, where they came and presented to our 11th graders. We had about 30 students show up across two sessions. We had a student that we, you know, highlighted in one of our spotlights that actually got to see some, some real serious medical procedures and really got a taste for what the nursing field might be like. We have about 97 internships, and it's really going well. We have about half, half are external and half of our students stay within Boyertown's borders. Thank you.
Can I just make a statement? When you spoke to the two hospitals, Tower Health took over Reading, I believe it was Penn State-St. Joe's that came out to present to our students.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so the Program of Studies has not changed too terribly much for the next school year. Two new course offerings that you'll see actually kind of already exist in the Program of Studies. So astronomy is already there, and we are looking to offer an additional level of honors astronomy moving forward due to student interest. And then also Tactics of Lifetime Sports 2, which is going to be running concurrently with Tactics 1. Students find that to be a very high-interest-level phys ed class. So we're offering a second level of that to run concurrently with Tactics 1. So again, '24 and '25 updates. We have several goals in looking at the Program of Studies and trying to really maximize what offerings we have available to our students here at BASH. The main thing we're looking at for next year is really increasing our instructional time for all of our students. Another goal of ours in looking at downtime for students is really reducing that unstructured, unmonitored time in a student's day and increasing opportunities such as the internships for real-world, real-life experiences for students. We're also looking to provide additional opportunities for students to pursue the courses that really pertain to their related fields, whether that's going into something in the workforce or something that helps our students that are going to be college and career-bound. And last but not least, we're certainly looking to reallocate some of our sources and maximize all of our staff here at the high school. So what we're looking at for next year is really going to an eight-period day instead of a nine-period day, which would increase our instructional periods to 48 minutes from 40. We would have a five-minute hallway transition. Currently, it's four minutes. And an eight-minute homeroom. We would still operate on a six-day cycle. And I'll let Mr. Sparks kind of expand upon the differences.
Thank you. One of the areas that we wanted to focus on was increasing instructional time. Doesn't seem like a big difference to go from 40 minutes to 48 minutes, but it is a 20% increase in instructional time, which when you take that over the span of a six-day cycle, we're basically getting an extra day free. So by doing that and focusing on some of our leadership from central administration, looking at horizontal alignment, the goal is not to put more information in there, but to still contain that same breadth that we're looking at for the curriculum, but to allow teachers to go deeper into the curriculum, provide more assistance, more instruction, and more support individually for our students within our classes. One of the other things that you look at from the instructional time right now is that the current model, we have about 720 minutes per year. Going up 20% puts us at 8,640 minutes per year, which again is that 20% increase. By taking out that extra ninth period and removing flex, so you'd have homeroom and then a straight one through eight, we reduce our transitions from 10 to 8 while increasing our instructional, or I'm sorry, our transitional time. We took some of the feedback that we have received from a lot of our staff, as well as our students and families, and realized that, yes, it is very tough to get from the 200th hallway down to the art wing in four minutes with 2,200 kids walking around the building simultaneously. So by providing that extra one minute, now we can really start to hold kids accountable with getting to those classes on time, but also being realistic that it's not as easy to do as we may believe. So these are some of the changes that we're looking to implement for the upcoming school year.
So we mocked up a regular homeroom and extended homeroom schedule. So we're really looking at, I'm not going to read this to you. It's a bunch of times and numbers on the board. But this does give us an idea of what it might look like at the high school. We use our extended homeroom time for assemblies and meetings, such as the class meetings we had with 11th grade last week for hospital visits. And then these, this would be three example schedules on the next slide, Mr. Stapp, where we have a kind of a general education student taking academic courses, college-bound, ready for, you know, what's coming down the pipe. These are all ninth grade, you know, kind of mock schedules. We looked at the eighth, eight periods that maybe a ninth grader coming to the high school might take. And then we see an IEP student that might have some extra study halls, an extra time with teachers. And then we see a GIP student that might have some AP courses even at ninth grade.
Okay, so what does this look like? What does this mean for our students? We would pretty much keep with the same. So for math, which is what we currently have, for ELA requirements, three science, and four social studies. We would be looking to clean up some of our credit counts. Right now, HPE counts for .83. That would go to one full credit for two and a half credits of Health PE. And we would be looking to add a .5 credit to reward our seniors for their successful completion of their career portfolio. So right now, any of you that have students in the building know that when they're seniors, the culminating activity of four years of career portfolio work is their senior presentation. And I know some of the board members had the privilege of joining us for some of those presentations. So we feel it's important enough that we want to reward that hard work with that half of a credit to our senior class in May. The other thing that would change is, right now in the Program of Studies, it says that every student must have one planned course of world language. So what does that mean? Right now, we have students that are struggling learners. They read at a fourth or fifth grade reading level, and they must take a world language class in order to meet this graduation requirement. We would be looking to remove that barrier. So any student who is certainly college-bound would be encouraged to take two years of the same language, which is what a lot of universities are still asking for at this point. But we would remove the one planned course for every single student. We would leave it to the students that are interested. The next piece is looking at our credit requirements for BCTC. And on the one-page document, we have it highlighted. If you have it in color, the BCTC requirements are listed in red to kind of show the differences. This is the same chart as the previous slide, but with the BCTC requirements. So BCTC students currently receive three credits per year for a total of nine. They would be required to take three math at BASH, four ELA. They would be required to take three math at BASH, four ELA, three science, three social studies, and two HPE. They would also then receive that .5 career portfolio or BCTC project credit requirement. Their total would end up being 24.5. Okay, and as far as grade level progression, because this is always the big question when we do our presentations to students and to, when the counselors are meeting with kids, how do I get promoted to 10th grade? So, a ninth-grade student would be required to take a minimum of five and a half credits and a maximum of seven. To go from 10th to 11th grade, they would be required 11 credits with a maximum of 14. 11 to 12 would be 16 and a half to 21, and then graduation would be 23 with a maximum of 28. So, as far as future considerations go, we know that no matter how well we plan for all instances and all issues or positives, there are gonna be things that come up next year, so we would be soliciting continuous feedback from all of our stakeholders. As Mr. Sparks alluded to earlier, part of that five-minute transition came from hearing our faculty. How can we, how can we hear them? How can we hear our students? So, gathering feedback from students, faculty, community members throughout the year next year to make the necessary adjustments as we move forward, which is what we should always be doing. Questions?
Sure.
Okay. When you said, as far as the flex period, okay, that you were reducing it, now that's a lot of the kids that have, you know, the clubs, are they still gonna be able to attend their club period?
I'll let you know.
Because they can't, most of them can't get transportation.
Yeah, it's a good question. So, we do have specialized homerooms, for example, TSA, FBLA, NJRTC, for example, where all students comprise of those particular clubs. Even if you look at our class officers, they meet with their class advisor in their specialized homerooms. One of the things we looked at is, what can we do to better suit all of our students? And what have we done at the beginning of this school year to really help get all of our kids, including those in the clubs, is to run kind of those extended homeroom periods. It allows the homeroom teacher to have time, especially in a club standpoint, to get the school year running and get off and started, but it also gives an opportunity for those who are not in clubs, which is probably 85% of the kids in the building, to have an opportunity to get started on those career portfolio assignments, to ask for feedback, to ask for information, whether it's the Smart Futures, Everfy Financial Literacy, but the opportunity to still be for a club exists. It's still, it's just gonna look a little bit different than it does. A lot of our kids do stay after. A lot of painting in the hallways that takes place happens after school. A lot of the TSA kids come in after school, NJRTC is here marching after school. So, we do take that into consideration. I do feel that they'd have enough time to do that.
So, you understood, I understood the world language, but basically, are we talking, and this has to do with junior highs or middle schools, are we talking about bringing back a language opportunity?
Ms. Torsha?
The middle, the middle school, I believe, Mr.?
Is that gonna be presented? I'll ask it at the...
They're gonna be reviewing the Program Study for middle school, correct?
There's no presentation.
Okay, there's nothing, okay. So, with respect to your question about are we looking to bring that back that is not in the Program Studies, we would need direction from the school board, because that would be staffing that would have to be put into place. There would be needed a world language teacher at each of the middle schools in order to be, to support offering a world language.
Okay. And with the, will the students have enough, will there be enough classes? Let's say there have been problems where a student will take one AP class, but it overrides another AP class, that they're gonna have to go for sure, is there gonna be more flexibility as far as the students be able to take? Not a lot of, there's not, there wasn't a lot of overlap, I mean, there was a lot of overlapping.
There will continue to be a lot of overlap, just because typically, a lot of our AP students opt, instead of just taking one AP class, they want all six. And they're also in band, and they're also in chorus, and so, we do our best to try to make accommodations for those students. Right now, we have students taking some courses online that could not fit them in their schedule, but we are going to cap our students with a maximum of seven planned courses of Boyertown credits. We have other students that, for example, are taking credits at Monco because they're interested in it because they want to, because it didn't fit in their regular schedule at the high school, but they'll max out at seven. So, however those seven fit, by the time they're seniors, they have to start making those choices as far as which DE, which AP are really gonna best meet my needs moving forward.
Okay, one last question.
Sure.
I'm sorry. The astronomy, are we talking about possibly bringing the planetarium back into the picture?
I have no idea.
That again would be a staff-intensive question as well, because there wouldn't be a personnel to operate the planetarium, and quite honestly, I'm not even sure what it would take to get that up and running with respect to the equipment, and has it become obsolete in the time that it's been shut down? I know that that was some conversation prior to my assuming this position, so that would have to definitely be something that would need to be directed, that we would want to put money into.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, because we could use that also as an income to other school districts, elementary school district, I mean, elementary students come in, and we could charge a fee for those schools, and hopefully cover our costs, but we've got that beautiful thing sitting there, and like you said, maybe we should, as a board, authorize some kind of research into it to see what exactly it is, but, so you're extending the astronomy class, what would be that much different between just a regular and adding?
So, it's about going deeper. So, the curriculum would be very similar, but it is about extension of activities for an honors-level class, deeper discussion. So, right now, they're all kind of grouped together, and there are students that that's a field that they're really interested in, so that would provide them that opportunity to go a little bit deeper.
I recall that there was a previous study done on the possible rejuvenation of the planetarium that the district administration would have, and I recall that the amount of dollars that would have taken to get the planetarium running was, for that time, which is probably in excess of 10 or 15 years ago, it must have been, it ran into the millions.
So, when you were, when we're gonna go back to...
Moving, oh, sorry.
Here, I'm gonna close.
Okay, so...
You should have turned yours on.
Okay. Okay, so, with the, removing the studies, removing the, now, the language.
What language?
The language, okay, as a requirement for graduation. I really struggle with that, because we're limiting a whole scope of things for students, but my bigger struggle is that studies have shown, educators know this, and parents know this, and that for a child to learn a language, it needs to start at a much younger age. We wanna get them in high school, and we should, if we're not gonna do it anywhere else, and try to get them to learn this language, and it is harder at that age. Countries all over the world teach students in elementary a second language, and sometimes a third, and English is typically that language. That takes that student to a whole new level when you start to get into a global market and global industries, and travel, and whatever it is, that student, because our kids are gonna compete not only in a national level for jobs and for recognition, they're gonna compete around the world for recognition, because we're just so much more global. I mean, Honda has people working over here, you can go to Japan, you don't know what opportunities they're gonna miss out on, because they don't get these languages earlier. I mean, earlier, I don't even mean middle school, but if that's where we have to go. I mean, even having an introduction to language in first grade, just a little thing, little bit here, we, there is curriculum out there that provides that for students to start to be introduced to language as, as young as kindergarten they do. If we wanna compete, and this isn't a Boyertown issue, this is a national issue in America. If we're gonna compete and get our kids out there, we can't be removing foreign language as a requirement for graduation. We have to get the kids started much, much earlier, and it wouldn't take a lot to move that mountain and start that at Boyertown. So, that's the way I feel, but I think we limit our kids, and from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I didn't hear from you correctly, but you're saying that we do have students that struggle with this. Well, wouldn't there be something else they could study? Like a foundational, you know, introduction to languages, didn't we have something like that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. We currently have a foundations course, and our students are still immensely struggling to get that requirement done.
Okay, well, they're struggling because you're waiting to high school to get them there. I mean, really, that's the bottom line, I'm not blaming you.
No, many of them are struggling because of their reading levels.
I know there are other schools, I'm not blaming you, please. There are other schools and other districts that have pulled this too, but that doesn't mean we have to do it here.
Yep, and just, we did look into that, Mrs. Scott, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you, but out of all of the different Berks County school districts, 100% of them do not require a world language for graduation.
No, I wasn't told that it was 100%, but I really don't, it doesn't matter to me what other school districts are doing, what matters to me is, are we doing the best for the students at Boyertown? And I don't believe that we are by removing this requirement and then not replacing it with something at an academic level. You know, we're not adding anything to, we're just taking it off and not replacing it, give them something else. If academics is still important, then why are we just taking these kids and just deciding for them, hey, you can't do that. We don't think you can do it, so we're gonna eliminate it. How many kids are gonna say, well, I'm not taking it? And there are colleges that still require that foreign language before you get in, and we don't want those kids that in ninth grade don't think they're gonna go to school, then decide in 11th or 12th grade they want to go, and we've, we've kinda messed them up there.
So, the colleges do require two years of the same language, so the foundations course is only a half of a semester, it would not meet that requirement regardless.
I'm talking about students taking two years of a language.
And they would still have the opportunity to do that.
I understand that, the other class, the other thing, the foundations would not be part of that. So, I don't think that we should do that to our kids. I think we're, first of all, we need to start it sooner. It just cannot, high school is difficult, they've got chemistry, they've got Algebra II and trigonometry, and all these, these other classes that are difficult, and then we add in the language. We need to start them sooner. It's not that hard, I mean, for me, that just makes sense. It's just common sense, that it's difficult for a child as they get older to learn a language. When you, when you grow up in a family that uses another language, you just automatically learn it. They're still able, at these young ages, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, to pick up things quicker than a 14-year-old. It's just, it's just, it's so well-known, I've read it all over the internet, I mean, I checked, right? I checked all over. Most of the people will say, these are educators that are saying that they encourage the instruction of foreign language in the elementary grades, it's the best time to start them, to start introducing them. I had difficulty with foreign language in high school, but I didn't have a problem with some Italian words I knew, 'cause that was the household I was in. So, just, that's it, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I think what was really alarming to me was hearing that we have students coming to ninth grade that can't read on their grade level, and I wanna see something done about that, because if they can't read at their grade level, how can they do math? How can they do science? How can they do social studies? How can they even try to learn a foreign language if they can't read the basics?
Yep.
So, I wanna know what we're gonna do about that.
I'll let Mr. Sparks speak to that, since that's his level of expertise.
Yeah, we do have the special education program, which are the students we're referring to. We have different direct instruction reading classes and programs to support their needs and kind of meet them at their individual levels. One of the things we're looking at is the progression that we currently offer to help our students gain more support as they go through their high school career. Some students are in a direct instruction program that inquires, you know, books A through E, which are really elementary-level books. We then have transitional English classes, we have other English classes that are related to the DI classes as well for specialized kids, but we also then looked at, you know, the curriculum that we have for biology. We have DI bio classes, we broke biology up as a whole and made it two, two years instead of one full year. So, we have DI Bio 1, DI Bio 2, same content, just broken down at a much slower pace. Same is true with math, we also have environmental science class, so we have curriculum that's adopted to meet their needs, and we have the SDIs that are in their IPs that help support them within those classes. Keep in mind, it's not just that, it's, they also have phys ed, they also have health, they also have the related studies that they're in. Those SEIs cover them across all the curriculum, not just in the core courses. So, there is, there is things being done, it's just a matter of, sometimes you don't really see it, because it is confidential.
Were you done? Okay. So, a few things, just from the discussion, and then some other questions that I had. I think it's really important that we recognize, as Mr. Sparks said, that we do have special ed, some special ed learners, and that really, our job is to meet students where they are. We can't, you know, we, we have some kids with, with some pretty significant challenges and needs, yeah, thank you. And when we're talking about equity in education, we're talking about creating systems in which kids can thrive and their needs can get met, no matter what level they're at, and I think that when we're talking about this piece of the removing the world language, that's what we're talking about, this is really an equity issue.
Correct. I mean, I'll speak for myself, when I'm sitting in an IEP meeting with a junior student or a senior student, and we're struggling to fit in a half of a credit of world language just to check a box, I think that that's, that's wrong. We're creating an inequity there. So, we're not removing world language, we want our students to take world languages, we will certainly continue to encourage that, but for the students that are struggling to read, to, who have other significant needs, we are removing a barrier for them to meet their graduation like anyone else.
And I think one thing that we're also creating is, we're now allowing those students to use that time to invest in things that will better serve them.
Absolutely. Something like an extra emotional support class or autistic support class would be much more beneficial, in my opinion, than sticking them into a world language class.
Or providing them that voice and choice to find something that they're very interested in.
Right. Yeah, so I think, again, this is about equity in education, and really allowing kids to, or making sure that, as a district, we're meeting students' needs. And then, I do hear my colleagues' concerns about if students were, like, you know, to just choose not to opt into language, and that, that's fair, but I think we also have to remember that parents, I mean, I have a high school, I have a junior, last year was a sophomore, and as a parent, it's really part of my job to help him build his schedule and to help him, to help guide him and to make sure that he's taking the appropriate classes, so that he can meet our, his future goals and our future goals for him as his parents. So, I think, you know, remembering that parents should be involved in that process of, if your kid says, I'm not gonna take a world language, and you know that your kid is college, that college is a possibility for them, then as a parent, you should say, yes, you are.
And that will be part of our presentations, as we focus to go through when we meet with parents in January, and again, when our counselors are meeting with the individual social studies classes, that's all part of that conversation that we're having with kids and parents as well.
Right, as we're prepping them, correct.
Yeah, course selection process is extremely important, especially during the IP team meetings, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. And then, the other thing I heard, and I am 100% for teaching languages earlier in elementary and middle school, I'm 100% for that, and I think you're correct, that there is a whole body of evidence that shows how beneficial that is in learning language. However, you know, we, we pass budgets to meet the needs that we have, and if we don't, we can't tie administrative hands during budget season and then expect them to expand programs. So, you know, when we're looking at the budget, we can't continue to pass these, I mean, 3.4% tax increase this year, it's hard, it's a hard hit for a lot of people, but it's not enough to expand programs, and those are things that we really do have to consider when we're looking at the budget, or you all will have to consider, 'cause I won't be here to do it this year, but you all will have to consider as, as you move into the budget season, which, you know, we're about to do. So, I know, I do have more to say, but I know, Miss Scott...
No, no, you can.
No, no.
I don't want to stop.
Okay, well, this is different, this is on...
Oh, well, if you're getting off on something different.
It's, it's of the Program Studies, but...
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay, if you would like, Ruth, I can...
No, they're writing it down, I made this all the time.
Okay. So, then I just had a few questions. You said that under the new schedule, and forgive me if I'm incorrect...
That's okay.
You said they would max out at seven. What do they max out at now?
Eight.
So they would have one less opportunity?
Yep, because there's one less period in the day and we won't take away their lunch.
Fair enough. I don't think they would appreciate that.
They try sometimes.
Yeah.
Take care of themselves.
So can students, under the new schedule, will students still be able to build study halls into their schedule? They will be able to do that. And then I know we had talked a little bit when this was presented about the electives. And I was just curious, because I'm here, I hear people say, well, I requested, I couldn't get a seat. How often is that happening? Like, are all of our elective seats filled right now?
So it depends on the course. You have to look at, I'll use FCS for an example. Those classes are capped at 24 because there's only 24 seats in the kitchen. So this year, for example, there were 200 requests for Family Consumer Science courses that we could not fill. By the time the schedules get done, some kids, you know, make a different choice because of overlap or because of things that, you know, are more interesting to them. But really, when we run the schedule, there were 200 requests for FCS that we could not fill this year.
So right now, how many of our elective seats are filled?
I would venture to say just about all of them. I'm sure there are courses, again, when students move out, when students, whatever, but when we run that initial schedule, those courses are very full. Ceramics is another one. There's 20 wheels in the ceramics room, so you can only have 20 students in there. So while the class size looks smaller, we cap that at 20. If it goes below 20, it's because a student moved or left the district for some, you know, placement, whatever, or a variety of reasons. But yes, when we run them, we fill them.
So if a student chooses an elective, and I know they can choose like first, second choice, like they make more than one choice.
They first choice and then two alternates.
Yeah. And do we have students who are being put into study halls instead of elective seats?
Yes, ma'am.
We do. And how often does that happen, would you say?
If you look at the numbers, I pulled them right before the meeting. So right now, we have 16,000 occurrences of open campus in a six-day cycle. 88% of our students have at least one open campus and 985 students have more than one open campus.
So 985 students have at least two study halls.
Yes, ma'am.
But, yeah, okay. Sorry, I'm old, so.
It can be study hall, it can be open campus depending on the needs of the student.
Okay. So that's a significant amount. And that would be in every day of their schedule or not?
It's a six, that's in a six-day cycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So just, I don't even know if you would know this, but I was curious, how many teachers have, like, or we could compare staff numbers, like with teachers from five years ago to today, how that would, how different that would look?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can tell you there have been some significant changes to our staffing. We could certainly get those, but there have definitely been some significant changes that we no longer have.
We have less.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have less teachers to fill those classes?
Off the top of my head, a music and art and a family consumer science in the last five years since I've been here.
Okay.
English, social studies, but, yeah. Hendero TC, yeah, there's, it's quite a list, but. No, those would be reallocations or not being filled through attrition
Right.
over the past five years. And we would certainly be able to get those numbers, but.
And that happens, I'm not, this isn't a question, but I'm just saying for the public's information, that happens generally due to budget concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Sorry, I have to keep putting my glasses on because I'm old and I can't see. Oh, and then just, I know this district as well as many, many other districts. So we are not alone in this. It's not a Boyer Town specific issue, but we've seen more disciplinary infractions. And I was just curious as to how that, how those relate to flex. Like, are we seeing those mostly during flex? Are we seeing them?
We have seen them all over the place. Flex, I think, is a potential area just because of there's, it's a study hall pretty much for the entire school at the same time. So you have, like I said, about 80% of the school has a study hall at the same time every single day. So there's definitely disciplinary concerns there. You look at some of the other classes like open campus, absolutely, there's concerns in there too. Anytime you put a couple hundred kids together with one or two people to watch them, there's potential for something to go wrong. Our disciplinary numbers right now are peaking very highly already at this part of the school year.
Yeah. So we, do you feel that the one less open period will kind of help?
That was part of the reason. It was one of the many reasons, but yes, creating less unstructured time.
For, yeah, okay.
The fewer transitions to.
And the fewer transitions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have been in high school during class changes and it's always interesting. Okay, so I just, thank you. And I think it's just important to recognize that budget, the budget does, as we enter budget season, the budget directly impacts how many courses we can offer. It impacts how many staff we can hire. It impacts how many programs we can offer to our students, things like world languages in the younger grades, all of which I would love to see expanded. But we have to, if we're going to do that, then we have to make a commitment to funding those things. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Fell asleep. Okay, on the honor astronomy and the other sports. Yeah, I would definitely like to see something in there for history. We have very, very little history classes, which I hear about from parents all the time. They talk to their kids about different things that happen in history. They have no idea. They have no idea. And I think that's very important, especially if we're adding new course offerings, because we already have both of those. We're just expanding on them. So it's not that we don't have them. And also, it'd be great to have a course called Life, where people learn things, the everyday things, how to balance a checkbook, how to change a tire, how to make jello, for instance. I mean, you laugh, but I'm serious. These kids go out into the world and we want to present a child out there, we teach them nothing of the everyday life. And I think it'd be a tremendous thing to have that. Now, you're going to eight periods. When we had nine, the last period on some of the schedules I've seen were all flex periods. I think that's what they call study halls now or clubs the last period. They weren't listed for any subject area.
So on the eight-period day or the nine-period one?
No, that's what we had. So now that we're going to eight periods, is that going to be the same way?
No. So students have courses at the end of the day here. It's not all open campus or study hall. They have courses here, period nine.
The middle school has.
The middle school, not the high school.
So they don't have, on any set day, they don't all have like the last period?
No, not at the high school.
So it varies throughout the day?
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to eliminate some of the study halls?
It will take some of them, yes. It'll take some of it out.
Okay. The other thing is, you know, they were talking about the curriculum and the kids can't read in ninth grade, as Mrs. Nodden said. I wonder how they got to ninth grade and can't read?
Again, the special education population, which my guess is probably around 20 to 22%, they're, again, they're progressing through their special education program, meeting those individuals' needs that they have, using the SDIs to get through that. Now, that includes our life skills programs, our autistic support programs, AES, and all the other students who fall in between. So it's itinerant, fully inclusive.
Okay, but the one students I was talking about are not special ed. The other thing is, I asked before about teaching, write, writing in cursive, and we don't teach that anymore, cursive. Well, we can read some of the students' handwriting.
I agree.
I mean, I think we need to do something about that. It's ridiculous. When we put a child out there, he can't read and now I can't read his writing. So what kind of a student am I sending out into the world? Certainly not one that I'm going to say, hey, I'm proud I came from Boyer Town. Things weren't like that when I was here ancient time ago. The last question I have is the portrait of a graduate. I didn't see that on this tonight. I read it somewhere recently in one of our emails. Do we have on there the speakers? Was that changed back to the way we had asked for it or changed that we have?
Speakers.
The speakers of graduation, cum laude. How is that on the, wouldn't that be under the portrait of a graduate?
No, that would be part of this and that was, that has not been changed.
So.
No, this year is the last of, that would be a different discussion.
No, we asked for that to be changed. Two years ago, and we were told that would be changed.
I'll turn that over to.
That is a part of a policy and the policy would have to come forward to move back away. No, it would have to come back to the policy and to the committee or to the board to vote on reverting back what was changed that we were using the Greek
Magna cum laude, sum claud.
Positions opposed to identifying the ludatory and valvatorian. So we have not, that was to go into effect, I believe, with this.
Next school year. This is the last year of the Val and Sal.
So we haven't moved to it, but it's in policy that we've adopted saying that we were going to move away from it. So that was presented and voted on.
We asked for, no.
I wasn't here.
That was supposed to be changed back.
I certainly was part of policy, but definitely it's just a conversation. If that's a policy that needs to come forward. I think that you need to listen to the high school and for, I don't know if you have an explanation as to where.
I'm actually going to revert to Dr. Mayori because he was a huge part of this, so how convenient he's here with us this evening. But I'm going to revert to him and let him speak a little bit to this. I do know, you know, this is what colleges are utilizing.
Word of college. We voted to.
Yeah, I want to say approximately.
I know, we voted to have that changed.
But approximately two years ago, I want to, maybe three years ago, the board policy did change. I can't recall the exact number off the top of my head regarding some of the graduation requirements and the verbiage of identifying the Val and Sal. And that was going to be slow-rolled in, so no current student in the high school would be impacted by that, but starting with the class of 2025. So that's been in the program of studies leading up to, leading up to where we are right now.
Yeah, we said we didn't want it. Pardon me? Well, not just that, the kids. Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons, you're coming out to the most minute detail, but a greater issue is that students were changing their schedules and making course selections for the wrong reasons, not for learning, but to just to get a certain title or get to the 1,000th point of a higher GPA. That's another, that was a big driving reason, as well as we're looking at the shift across the nation of recognizing the awesomeness of the kids and not wanting them to not take certain courses just because it hurts a GPA. We had band kids, we had chorus kids stop taking something they're interested because those courses weren't weighted like in honors or AP. So we would have students who had the same exact academic histories of AP classes. We're talking about AP Bio, AP Chem, DE this, AP that. But then that one kid who continued with chorus for the four years was fourth in the class.
Where's the guidance casters with all that?
They know that. They know that. Do we want our students to not take those things that they love?
Reword it someplace else, some other way to keep those kids from getting it, if that's what the problem is.
That's why our solution was, we came to the board for that revision of the policy.
I don't care what they do worldwide or in colleges. This is what we want here at Boyer Town, is what we voted on the last time.
So the policy was adopted November 23rd, 2021.
21.
And so that was when it was adopted with the comment saying maybe that says, students in the class of 2022, 2023, and 2024. Students in the class of 2022, 2023, and 2024 will be reported ranked by grade point average. For the graduating class of 2022, 2024, students' grade point average and numeric rank in class shall be entered on the student's record in transcripts and shall be subject to board policy or release of student records. It also went on to talk about, I'm not going to read the whole of policy, but it talks about beginning with the class of 2025. The board authorizes a system of class rank afforded in destiles, calculated by grade point average, et cetera. And I believe it goes on to speak about the valvatorian and salutary recognition and/or the awarding of financial aid. For the graduating class of 2025 and beyond, a student's numeric rank by grade point average will only be computed for the purposes of admission to higher education. Valvatorian and salutary recognition and/or the awarding of financial aid where required by the requesting institution, but then it just continues to go on. So what I'm hearing the board saying, and if there's a majority of the board, that they want to see this policy of class rank 214 brought forward so that it changes and that you want to continue to see the valvatorian, salutary, then that will be the direction of, you know, the majority of the board.
I have a comment on that. I think, one, you know, I'm not an educator, I'm not trained as an educator, but I have had a lot of kids and I've, you know, been in the school system for a while. I see this over and over again, that our educators' jobs are really to inspire students to do their best and inspire students to find their passions and inspire students to kind of feel safe taking risks, looking, especially in high school, where we're exploring, trying to figure out where we fit, what we want to do. And I think that this move that we took in 2021 helps students do that. It takes the pressure off, like you said, of taking this class because it's weighted more. I'm not really interested in it, but I'm going to take it because it's weighted more and, you know, it might get me into the number one or the number two spot. What is really important here? Is it the spots or is it the student's educational experience? Because for me, it's the experience. It's what kids are kind of digging into these electives, finding their passions and really having that time to chart their future course. I think that's what we should be looking at. What best serves students, not what makes two people, you know, feel highlighted at a graduation ceremony. And I think, I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't remember the Greek words for it. The idea of expanding that to really recognize students who have achieved amazing things and worked incredibly difficult to reach that is inspiring to students. It's inspiring to me. And I think kids really deserve that. And I think we should really stop looking at, well, we've always done it this way, and look at what way best serves students. That should be the focus of what we're doing here, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Basically, we are recognizing the students by telling high honors and stuff like that. Instead of saying magna cum laude, it's still, they are still being recognized for their, for the level that they taught and the grades that they got. I remember hearing a story that the reason we need to go to this is because we had a student that didn't take a class because he was too afraid to speak at the class, at graduation. And if that was the case, I would think that our principal at that time would have said, no problem, would have dropped him down to the next person. We never want to put a student under that kind of pressure if they're not feel that they want to speak in front of 600 people. So, but that was another reason we were told we were going to this. And I kind of don't believe that story, but that's beside the point. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm sorry. I think we were not, I just want to clarify that because we were not told that was one of the reasons we were going this route. We were told that, you know, that, we were.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
If I could finish, please. We were told that that was an incident, that a kid had a fear of public speaking and had that anxiety and that's understandable. But the reason why we were going this route was really so that, so that students would choose classes that they are interested in and that they could explore their interests instead of choosing classes for their weight to get them, you know, to get them into a certain position at graduation. Again, I'm not going to be here.
If I could comment on that, you're exactly right, Ms. Oaken. There's underlying foundational reasons why we want to promote the student choice, the student excellence, the student's rigor, and remove ancillary details or reasons why students aren't pursuing that. That is the basis and root of why, you know, we have these. That is the, the basis and root of why, you know, we have these discussions while we put some work. There are other, you know, scenarios, situations, stories and so forth that everybody has, you know, individual views on, but you hit it right on the head of wanting to, again, recognize the awesomeness of these kids. We have, we look at, I don't know if the GPAs were shared with you or the past histories of GPAs, we're, we're talking the minutia of detail of scores of students that are doing awesome things and there's no point in not, in further exacerbating some sort of fictitious type of perception of how we do when we have, you know, every year we have, you know, five to seven kids that are just straight A's across the board in all these tough classes.
Switting hairs.
It's just the difference of taking band or music or this FCS class to learn how to make jello, which is, we want the kids to take those classes too and, and make that happen.
If I can just say, please, can you turn off?
Yep. As, as you, much as I appreciate the input of the school board with respects to policy to 14, class rank, I don't believe that this has anything to do with our program of study that we are presenting this evening. And if the board is going to direct me as the majority that they would like me to bring forward 214 to have it reverted back, to remove that, then that's the direction. But at this point, I would say that we should continue to focus on the program of study because the, the class rank doesn't have anything to do with the next offering and what we're trying to do. I, I just wanted to circle us back so that I, I hear you and I will, since I'm responsible for policy, I will work with Mr. Panarello, Mr. Zawada, not Mr. Zawada, I'm sorry, I don't even remember who's on this. It is, I'm sorry. And, you know, we will address that. I, I do wanna make one comment with respects to the, the history offerings. Within the program of study draft, there are about 20 different offerings that fall under the history. We have US History II, we have Modern World Studies, Modern World History, we have AP European Government Economics, DE US National Government, AP Economics, AP US Government, PA and Local History, Contemporary Global Issues, Conflict and Consequences, Sociology, Honor Sociology, AP Psychology, AP Human Geography, and any other social studies AP offered in a previous grade such as AP US History, European History, Economics, et cetera. So there is a pretty robust offering with respects to history and it's, it's embedded within the, the 82 pager, I think it's longer than that, I apologize, but it is in there so that you could reference that.
Students really get that choice in their junior and senior year for social studies.
Okay. All right, so I just, I want you, just clarify one thing for me. So you're saying that we are removing foreign languages from our graduation requirements because of kid, the IEP kids and our special needs? Is that the bottom line here?
That's part of it. Also, our students that attend BCTC, that is a barrier for them. They have to currently squeeze that into their day as a requirement to meet that graduation requirement. If students start attending BCTC in 10th grade, that really puts a constraint on the courses that they're able to take here at BASH. And we certainly do not wanna discourage kids from applying to BCTC, we wanna encourage them instead. And that does create a barrier for them as well.
So where's the equity for the students that aren't gonna take the foreign language because they know they don't need it and then turn around and now they're gonna have to because of this college or this career that they wanna get into requires a second, second language? I mean, whatever it is, when you talk about equity, it's across the board for everyone. If we have students that can't do it, and we know that as educators, you know that you have students that can't do it and then you have students that just don't want to. You, you make the concessions for your IEP students and you make the concessions for your special needs, but. Go ahead. Okay.
Yeah. If I, do you mind? Yeah. The problem with that is that you can't. If it's a graduation requirement, it's a graduation requirement for every graduate. So, and when we're talking about equity, again, we're talking about meeting kids where they aren't, making sure they have what they need to succeed. So, again, I think if you're a kid who is college bound or even questionably college bound and you're that parent, you say to the kid, you're taking language, that's it.
And again, that's part of, if I may, Ms. Hogan, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you, but that is a huge part of those conversations the counselors are having with the students. So they do general presentations, we do general presentations, but then the counselors all meet individually with students in this library, they conference with them on their course cards, going over future plans. So they individually meet with every single one of their kids and that's part of that discussion.
And that takes place every year. So if somebody shifts what they wanna do from freshman year to 10th grade to, maybe I wanna go to college seventh and 12th grade, that's when those conversations are taking place and their credits and schedules are adjusted to meet their needs.
And I can personally attest to the excellence of our counselors, especially here in the high school, I mean, throughout the district, but because I sat with the counselor and my son and we looked at the course offerings and we really kind of decided, hey, together with him, I mean, he's, you know, 16, so he's still soliciting. You know, we kind of decided together and built that schedule out with the idea of we know where we're going and we just keep moving forward, you know, on that map step by step. So I think that's, we, you know, we, we have to, we have to make sure that the kids who have significant needs, that we're not wasting their time. And I think forcing, forcing a kid who has a third grade reading level into a remedial language is wasting their time, especially when that time can be used better elsewhere. And making sure that the kids who are college bound and the BCTC kids, some of them, if they, you know, some, some BCTC kids go to college and they may say, hey, I still wanna take a language.
I was gonna say, there is, you know, certain programs at BCTC are allowing our students to walk out of there with college credits and we certainly don't wanna discourage them from taking a foreign language. So we have students that will opt for the BASD virtual option as well, which we allow our students to do to provide that level playing field and flexibility for the upper echelon as well.
Right, so there's like lots of pathways.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's great to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I've never done yet. Sorry.
Could I maybe suggest we table this since it seems like everybody has a lot of concerns?
There's nothing to table, this was, there's no vote for this. This was just everyone giving their opinion and if everyone gave it, we're ready to move on.
I mean, 'cause it seems like we're gonna have a lot more questions on this.
So Patty, close your ears a second. If we were, I mean, we know the teacher shortage, but there's cyber options. There's, you know, if you were looking at World of Miracles, would there be a way for us to make sure that our kids do get this? And if there's some kind of cost, have we looked into that? I mean, I would rather see, you know, instead of a, and this is not a knock on band, so don't take it, or a new football or a new tuba, rather see the money be presented because the kids are here for a language, to learn. The rounded education is very important. I'm not saying against that, but I'm just kinda like, you know, I mean, kids can take college classes online and earn credits while they're still in high school. So for argument's sake, why couldn't we offer that additional, maybe don't have the teacher, but maybe offering a language in the eighth grade or ninth grade instead of a study period? I'm just asking if that can be researched or.
We would still need someone to sit with those students, even if it was a virtual course and we're offering it, we're still responsible for where those students go during the school day. I don't, I don't wanna interrupt you, Ms. Torscha.
So what I'm hearing, Mr. Zawada, is that at least one board member, two, are looking for the administration at my level to bring forward a foreign language somewhere before the students are getting into the high school. Because, you know, putting in and making it a requirement for graduation, that's something that is well outside of the Department of Education's requirements, does not make much sense, especially as you're, you're looking at your four years and, you know, trying to plan out where and what you want to, you know, start to pursue and think about. But what I, I feel that I'm hearing is that there's interest in us figuring out how we're going to be able to come up with staffing to support a world language opportunity, much like the foundations class at the middle level.
But even, forget the language, we just had a class that had 200 people, we had 24 spots for 24, so we didn't offer 75 kids the opportunity to be in that class, even though there was the interest.
That was one of those teacher areas that was not replaced upon a retirement in addition to tech ed and art. Those were three related studies positions alone that were not filled.
It all comes down to budget.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm saying Patty, hold your ears.
Fun balance and.
Staffing, I understand. That's why I'm saying there's other ways a child can learn. I mean, we do, we do offer cyber schools for total, for their complete education. We reviewed that during the senior presentation and we could see the difference. But I'm just saying for one course, not their whole grade, you know, we have cut back and I don't feel, and I know it has a lot to do with the economy, it has a lot to our budget, but there is a point that we're not giving justice to the kids, all because of the God almighty dollar, and I understand that. That's why, in a way, I had brought up about the bond. You know, if, I'd rather extend our debt another 10 years and keep the payment the same because we're lowering our payment and use that funds for situations like this, where's an expense that comes up. And again, this was all for discussion tonight. So I'm glad we tabled the vote because there was a lot more discussion than I thought we were gonna have, and I'm glad we did. So, and it seems like you got the gist, so, and, you know, maybe we, you know, schedule an executive meeting and voice some concerns before the next meeting or.
I, I don't, I, it has to be communicated publicly, but the program, the program of study, we can always adopt additional coursework and say, this is open and provide that out to students once a budget would be adopted for the 24, 25 school year, providing that it would be including staffing somewhere, whether it's middle or high school. But we also have to look at staffing overall as an entire school district. We have to look at our elementary levels, we have to look at our, you know, population of students there. So, you know, we have to determine where is the best place to be bringing in more staff? Do we want 30 students in first grade and second grade? Or do we want to continue to keep the bubble teachers that are in place and, you know, reduce our numbers there, which is then going to help to, you know, with reading instruction and math instruction and, and, you know, being able to work with a smaller group and then, you know, going from there? Do we, you know, look at, you know, other challenges that we have that would be, you know, with staff? So I think what I'm hearing, you know, from this discussion is that we need to bring forward what the staffing needs are going to be for the 24, 25 school year, and there's going to be some decisions made by the, the school board with respects to adding back into either the program of study and giving students at the high school more options, adding back staffing at the elementary level, adding staffing back at the, the middle level for a planetarium and for a language. So that's a lot of people that would need to be put into place. So I, I think we, we need to give you all of the information so that you can make an informed decision as you adopt a budget.
As you just said, you know, we're looking, that we need staffing in the elementary school. Okay. So something's fallen between the cracks because we have our kids coming up that can't read or write properly at their grade level. So we're failing somewhere.
I, I wouldn't say we're failing, right. I, I would not say that we're failing and our students who are delayed.
Our students who are delayed with respects to any subject area, reading, writing, you know, math, they are delayed because of developmental delays, they're delayed because of challenges that they have with respects to, you know, their needs. They're students that are identified, they're students who we are tracking and who, in some cases, don't participate in social studies classes because they're, they're receiving additional reading classes. So we're, we're doing all of the things that we need to do to address those students who are qualifying and are, are identified, but what I'm talking about is just overall class sizes that as, you know, teachers have to manage larger class sizes at those primary levels, it does take away from some of that, you know, smaller group instruction. It just inverts us from being able to do certain things. So we're really off on a tangent, but I appreciate, you know, you're seeing that, you know, we're gonna need to talk about staffing a little bit more, not just for regular classes at the elementary, but for other things that we also, it sounds to me like, you know, people are very passionate about and, but, but again, I think that the program of study, the questions about what is in there, not much has changed. Just to recap, we're not taking away the fundamentals of world language, I'm calling it the wrong thing.
I have taken it out of the program of studies because the course would go away.
Okay.
We would not need that fundamentals course because students would take Spanish one. Instead of taking that half-year course to check a box, they would take actual Spanish one.
So my question to the administration then would be, what would happen if we put it back in as an elective? Not a requirement, but it gives the students another opportunity to take that class and then talk about equity. We're, we're apparently, there would be the most equitable approach.
We can certainly do that, that will not change anything for us.
I, I think that that would be in our best interest, not making it a graduation requirement, but having it as an elective for students, which then could reduce some of the students who are in a study hall. And it does give people an opportunity to say, okay, here, here I go. Because we weren't reducing staff, we were just diverting.
And we will certainly prioritize, you know, Spanish one, German one, we will certainly prior, prioritize those courses as right now, Spanish one is full with 30 students in it nine periods a day. It is loaded, as is the fundamentals class. But I do think you'll see a shift in that, it'll give you some flexibility and some room in Spanish one, Spanish two, and the higher levels of Spanish for those students that wanna take it all four years of high school. The other thing I wanted to say was, you know, thank you for the opportunity tonight to explain, as Ms. Torscha said, not a whole lot is changing in the program of studies. I can certainly add the fundamentals of German and Spanish back in, that's not an issue at all. But I do, I do want everyone to know that it's important that we move forward as soon as possible because this helps us with our timeline for scheduling. It's a huge undertaking, scheduling 2,200 students and providing them with that individual attention. This certainly helps us maintain that timeline which starts in January.
Ms. Scott, only because you were very passionate about it, do you believe that that is meeting halfway and, and at least then it's there for everyone to be able to access? And if you don't have elective and you need a certain credit, you're gonna get pushed into that class.
And that would stay as a point five, which is what it is right now, point five credit.
No, we're, we're not.
I know that, but I love to say call for a vote. Because we never get done talking. It's over and over and over the same thing.
I, my, my directive is to place that back into the program of study so that students have the opportunity to have that exploratory language opportunity.
I will do that right now and email it right to you. Anytime.
Okay, I understand what you're saying about special needs and reading and all that. How many other students are being lumped into that that aren't special needs or have that IEP that still cannot read to grade level?
I, I would think that that's, that's an impossible venture for me to tell you, off the top of my head, who can't read to grade level. Students have struggles, there's no doubt about it. Whether they have an IEP or not, students are coming to us with a number of challenges, whether it's, go ahead.
Might not even be reading, it might be math, it might, it could be anything that they're still struggling with, that they're not up to grade level on.
So one of the things we used to have available at the high school was a homework intervention center that was part of our day. We no longer have that due to staffing. So that's another piece where that was a layer of intervention that we no longer have available.
What high school kids are doing now?
Mm-mm.
I thought you said, several years back, the high school.
Not since I've been at the high school.
We had students who'd helped tutor, but this was, this was sponsored by a staff member who worked with the counselors for a kid who was maybe struggling, maybe having even issues with like executive functioning and organization, things like that. And they would help coordinate times for that student to come into their class as a study hall, but it would be more structured with this homework intervention center.
Tutoring.
And then from there, they would help direct that kid to the tutoring that they need and make the special passes and offer the support, but unfortunately, we don't have the staff to do that.
I just wanted to comment really fast, but for, for students who have significant delays, there is a legal process in place that helps them get their IEPs in place and that can be triggered by staff, it can be triggered by parents, yeah. So there is that process. So there is that process in place to identify those, those students and to get them the extra supports that they need to be successful, so.
PSSA testing, other curfew-based measures that we utilize.
Also identify those students who are at risk, and those students then are, you know, put forth for evaluation. And, and there, it's a two-pronged situation, that you have to have a disability and a need, and there's not always a disability to go along with the need. And therefore, we have students who are just functioning in, in that level without the supports of special education.
Public comm period number one. John Amy.
No.
That's on now. Right, yeah, okay. John Amy, New Hanover Township. First of all, I want to thank you guys for delaying the vote to next, the next meeting, because I thought this discussion, a lot of it was fruitful. It also gives me time to think about what I've read, what I've read and what I've heard tonight, which, you know, there's definitely a lot of questions I'm still gonna have to ponder. One thing I am gonna say, though, is, three years ago, when we were having budget discussions, what happened tonight was exactly what I said you guys needed to do. You needed to have this discussion first. You need to have a discussion about what you wanted to do, what you wanted to offer, what you wanted to fund these kids. Money follows strategy, not the reverse. You have set us up for a situation where strategy has to follow money. We've heard several times tonight that teachers or that this, this administration is having a hard time funding just the programs they're offering today, because of the budget constraints that they have. And you're talking about wanting to have more? Now, don't get me wrong, I agree we should have more, but that's a serious strategic discussion that has to go way more in-depth than we've gone to tonight. This is what I'm asking for. I'm not just coming up here to say, just raise taxes to the act one. I'm saying, talk about what you want to do and fund it properly. One last thing. I'm sorry, but funding it properly is not paying for operating expenses by borrowing money. You can't take out a bond to pay for a German teacher. The operating expense is perpetual. The loan comes to an end and has a fixed rate. Have a serious discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Pecone.
Joe Patrion, Douglas Township. I wanted to mostly echo what Mr. Amy said, that thanks for, I think this discussion showed why you absolutely shouldn't have had to vote today. It was a, a lot to hash out, and it seems like, I, I don't know how many directives Mrs. Torsia has to, to move forward and, and, and moving on with what people had said, which is great. I'm not saying that's bad. That's what committee meetings are supposed to be for. They're supposed to be for these in-depth discussions, to hash things out, to talk about them, the back and forth. And I'm really glad that we had this discussion, because it seemed like there was a lot of questions. But what it really seems to boil down to is, I hear people talking about, why do we have this? Why don't we have that? Well, you're the board. You're in charge. You control the purse strings. These were your decisions over the last few years, to not fund the district as much as you could, to save money in taxes, and that, that's a decision that can be made. That's a position that people can take. It's not even an unreasonable position, but the choices are yours. You can choose to move forward from this discussion and move forward with things like bringing back middle school language, looking at how much it would cost to reopen the planetarium, adding more foreign languages, adding more history classes. I am a history teacher. I think there should be way more history classes, and I see my own kids in elementary and middle school, and they don't get near enough of it. There is not nearly enough history education. I am one hundred percent behind Mrs. Deroff on that. The high school, it sounds like there's a lot, so I don't know if you need to add more. I teach AP world history. I see that's not on the list, but there's a lot of classes, so I understand why that might not be added. But really, what I just wanted to come up here and say is that you are in charge of this district. I'm not in charge of this district. The people out here are not in charge of this district. These are your decisions to make. And the reason we don't have these things is because of decisions in the past that some of you made, that some of you, that were made before some of you were here, but let's move forward and make good decisions, and maybe in a couple of years, we can be talking about the things that we're gonna add, instead of all of the things that we've lost, because we don't have enough staff. So, thank you.
Just now, we're looking for the approval of the October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
Ms., Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Tonight, I will be looking for, under the superintendent's itemized agenda, for the, the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight trip as listed. The administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve the overnight student trip, District Ten Chorus Festival overnight, trip for Bash choir students to Jim Thorpe High School. There are nine students, one chaperone, attending from one twenty-five to one twenty-six with expenses as presented.
Deroff moves. Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for, I have a motion to approve the employment agreement between the Board of School Directors of the Boyer Town Area School District and Bradley S. Hawn as Chief Human Resources Officer effective December eighteenth until through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, per the contract. The administration is pleased to recommend Bradley Hawn for the Chief Human Resource Officer position with a start date of December eighteenth.
Deroff moves. Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
It's my pleasure to vote yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I was just gonna say, would you like to come to the podium and have your.
Speech, speech. Take your time. Give any input on the program of study?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to commend the, the board and the administration. I thought the, the process, the interview process was thorough, the two rounds of, of interviews that I had. There was so many insightful questions in regards to my philosophy on HR, as well as my, my history, and I'm very happy to be part of, of this school district, so thank you for this opportunity.
Next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
So I just, I have a quick question. I see that an art teacher is retiring. Will she, will be replacing that position?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And then I just wanted to note that it looks like we have three support, three, you know, of our staff, and they all have long-term service, so I just wanted to thank them all. And that's all.
I see we have two more grounds people leaving. And that makes quite a few in our small little group. They all have a lot of years in, and I know some of them aren't even old enough to retire. They're retiring from here. I'm not saying they're going someplace else, but age-wise, they're not eligible for social security. And I was wondering if we're even checking why? There's something wrong that everybody's leaving.
I have no input on, with respect to the. Groundsman that are, are moving on. One is part-time and, but I don't, I don't have information, Mrs. Deroff. I, I apologize.
We can check with the Human Resources Department and see if exit interviews were held to determine. I can find out from the Human Resources Department.
I would, I would appreciate it, because that's alarming to me.
This one name on here seems to be a person that was here once before, I think. I don't know if I can say it in public.
Mr. Saltanik, and then he'll tell you.
The question is.
There's a name on here that's been on here before.
That I think quit and came back or something. I'm questioning if we left him go or whatever, and we're bringing him back.
If we were to have that kind of discussion, we would need to go in executives.
And I don't have that answer, so I, I have, I do not know what you are, are speaking to, but. To my information brought to me, I have not been in conversation about bringing back anybody that we would have left out.
I don't know if we left him go or if he quit, or how it all was.
Name doesn't sound familiar.
Call for executive session here in the meeting.
And I, I don't even know.
Well, she doesn't have the information. More help.
I have no information at this point, so if you want to have a, a name.
I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
Okay.
Ms. Scott. Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Updegrove.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comm period number two. Jennifer Seville.
My name is Jennifer Seville. I am here tonight to speak about bullying issues. My daughter is a student at Bash, is on IEP for an auditory processing disorder. Her bullying situation began last year as a freshman. This situation was brought to the attention of the school. Both girls were questioned and told to be civil and stay away from each other. Both students were in the same class, and the seating was switched to kept them apart. On the first day of sophomore year, these two are put together in homeroom, and the situation starts anew. By the second day of school, I start contacting Bash, reminding them of the past situation, and requesting a homeroom change. Nothing was done. Fast forward to late September, issues continue, and the guidance counselor reaches out, saying they would like to set up mediation between the two girls. I give my consent, because this has to stop. The week of October twenty-third, and for the duration of the entire week, my daughter starts being harassed by a backup Snapchat account. This person tells my child she wants to fight her, wants to meet her in school bathrooms, and has told my daughter to kill herself. On October twenty-seventh, my daughter is called to the office, because she was reported to be in the possession of a vape. The search was performed, and nothing was found. My child no longer felt safe and had to spend the entire day with her learning support teacher. Her feel, her fear also spilled over to her desire to attend the football game that night. Upon arriving at the game with her older sister, it was confirmed the tormentor would not be in attendance. That weekend was relentless with Snapchat messages, and at one point, she was told that the owner of this Snapchat account would be coming to our home, and if my daughter came outside, she would be shot. She was also sent a video of herself walking home from school. Yes, I have informed the police of all of this. October thirtieth, I go back into school and met with the principal, a guidance counselor, and one of my daughter's teachers. Their approach is that they want this to end as much as we do, and we should trust them in manner in which they will handle it. Homerooms are now changed. School officials tell me that the person they approached at the game is now saying my oldest daughter confronted and harassed her, to which both my daughters deny. The school wants to speak with my oldest daughter and this new accuser. I said absolutely do it. I will do anything to keep any of my children safe. Unfortunately, this sit-down never occurred with my oldest daughter. How do I believe they will keep my child safe, when she has had her life threatened, and they do not carry through with what they say they will do in the end? Last Friday, my sophomore daughter was sitting in the lunchroom, eating with her friends, when the tormentor entered the lunchroom. This person attacked my daughter from behind and began punching her. I do not condone physical confrontation, but my daughter had every right to defend herself, most especially when the school failed her. My issue's number one, how is it possible for this child to be in the same common area as my daughter, when she was not supposed to be there? The security guard saw her. He knew she shouldn't be there, was aware of the situation, yet did nothing to prevent her from entering the lunchroom and attacking her. Why wasn't my oldest daughter ever contacted to see what went down at that football game? Why did my child have to sit in learning support all day, just to feel safe? In conclusion, my opinion is that the school drop the ball on guaranteeing the safety of my daughter, something I am not going to let die down. I do not believe that my child is safe in school, and I do not think this is the end of my child being harassed. Thank you.
Kalina Seville.
Hi, my name's Kalina. I'm a virtual student at Bash. I have a younger sister who was a sophomore as well at Bash. I am here tonight in support of her and to inform everyone listening exactly what is going on in her life as a Bash student. I'm here tonight as a protector and the big sister she looks forward to for advice. My sister has a documented disability and has an IEP. It's hard for her to make friends and doesn't stand up for herself, both because of her disability, as well as the fact that she wants people to like her and be her friend. Sadly, this has also led to become the target of bullying by someone in her classes and homeroom. On October twenty-seventh, my sister was reported to be in a possession of a vape. She was called down to the office and searched. Nothing was found, and she was sent on her way. Upon leaving the office, she went to the learning disability room and spent the remainder of her day there. She was so upset when she came home that day, not only because of what happened regarding the search, but also because she wanted to go to the football game that night, but was now afraid to go, because she felt her tormentor was behind this false report, and that this person would also be at the game to harm her. I told her that I and a friend would go with her. Upon arriving at the game, we saw this tormentous friend. I asked the friend if the other girl would be there, and was told no. Good enough for me, and, and off we went with our night. The weekend was awful. The tormentor made a backup account on Snapchat and started harassing my sister on Snapchat through the weekend, saying she wanted to fight her, would shoot her, and even posted a video of my sister walking home from school. On Monday, my parents went into the school to voice their concerns, and were told that I was now being accused of threatening this girl's life. I did not do that and have witnesses to what was spoken in the conversation with the tormentous friend. I'm not the bad guy, and neither is my sister. I will always support and protect her when I feel she can't do it herself. On Friday, November tenth, this person jumped my sister from behind while my sister was eating her lunch in the cafeteria. This other girl was not even supposed to be in there, due to separations made, and due to the fact that she should have been in attendance in another class. The security guard knew this girl was not supposed to be there, yet did nothing to stop her when he saw her enter the cafeteria. This girl is so determined to get my sister, that she even had the audacity to have someone in place to video the attack on my sister. This video has been posted all over social media. Nobody should have to go through the horrors and terrors of being bullied, told they were gonna be shot, and told to kill themselves. This has to stop. I feel if the school would have acted on separating my sister and this girl at the very beginning, we wouldn't be here today. My sister should not have been attacked while minding her own business. I should now, I should not now be worried that I am going to be disciplined for something I didn't do and was merely trying to protect her. I have never once in time I spent with Boyer Town been called to the principal's office or ever been in trouble, and had great relationships with all my teachers. I am not the problem here. The aggressor is. Thank you for your time.
Robert Seville.
Sorry, a lot of this is redundant. My name is Robert Seville. I'm a police officer for Telfer Borough, and my daughter is a sophomore at your school. She's a very sweet, loving girl. Damn, I'm, I'm the soft one, too. Sorry. Yeah. She's a very sweet, loving girl, and we've been told by anybody that encounters her how much they love her and adore her. She has now grown a severe passion for wrestling. It has become her therapy. She suffers with high anxiety, learning disability. This year has been hell. I have watched as she has been, as she has balled her eyes out, been harassed, threatened, and more. She was humiliated when she got called down to the office over the fake safe to say. That night she came to my house.
as my daughter when she was not supposed to be there? The security guard saw her, he knew she shouldn't be there, was aware of the situation, yet did nothing to prevent her from entering the lunchroom and attacking her. Why wasn't my oldest daughter ever contacted to see what went down at that football game? Why did my child have to sit in learning support all day just to feel safe? In conclusion, my opinion is that the school dropped the ball on guaranteeing the safety of my daughter, something I am not going to let die down. I do not believe that my child is safe in school and I do not think this is the end of my child being harassed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kalina, I'm a virtual student at Bash. I have a younger sister who is a sophomore as well at Bash. I am here tonight in support of her and to inform everyone listening exactly what is going on in her life as a Bash student. I'm here tonight as a protector and the big sister she looks forward to for advice. My sister has a documented disability and has an IEP, it's hard for her to make friends and doesn't stand up for herself both because of her disability as well as the fact that she wants people to like her and be her friend. Sadly, this has also led to become the target of bullying by someone in her classes and homeroom. On October 27th, my sister was reported to be in a possession of a vape. She was called down to the office and searched, nothing was found and she was sent on her way. Upon leaving the office, she went to the learning disability room and spent the remainder of her day there. She was so upset when she came home that day, not only because of what happened regarding the search, but also because she wanted to go to the football game that night, but was now afraid to go because she felt her tormentor was behind this false report and that this person would also be at the game to harm her. I told her that I and a friend would go with her. Upon arriving at the game, we saw this tormentous friend. I asked the friend if the other girl would be there and was told no. Good enough for me and, and off we went with our night. The weekend was awful. The tormentor made a backup account on Snapchat and started harassing my sister on Snapchat through the weekend, saying she wanted to fight her, would shoot her and even posted a video of my sister walking home from school. On Monday, my parents went into the school to voice their concerns and were told that I was now being accused of threatening this girl's life. I did not do that and have witnesses to what was spoken in the conversation with the tormentous friend. I'm not the bad guy and neither is my sister, I will always support and protect her when I feel she can't do it herself. On Friday, November 10th, this person jumped my sister from behind while my sister was eating her lunch in the cafeteria. This other girl was not even supposed to be in there due to separations made and due to the fact that she should have been in attendance in another class. The security guard knew this girl was not supposed to be there, yet did nothing to stop her when he saw her enter the cafeteria. This girl is so determined to get my sister that she even had the audacity to have someone in place to video the attack on my sister. This video has been posted all over social media. Nobody should have to go through the horrors and terrors of being bullied, told they were going to be shot and told to kill themselves. This has to stop. I feel if the school would have acted on separating my sister and this girl at the very beginning, we wouldn't be here today. My sister should not have been attacked while minding her own business. I should now, I should not now be worried that I am going to be disciplined for something I didn't do and was merely trying to protect her. I have never once in time I spent with Borotown been called to the principal's office or ever been in trouble and had great relationships with all my teachers. I am not the problem here, the aggressor is. Thank you for your time.
Robert Seville.
Sorry, a lot of this is redundant. My name is Robert Seville, I'm a police officer for Telfer Borough and my daughter is a sophomore at your school. She's a very sweet, loving girl. Damn, I'm the soft one too, sorry. She's a very sweet, loving girl and we've been told by anybody that encounters her how much they love her and adore her. She has now grown a severe passion for wrestling, it has become her therapy. She suffers with high anxiety, learning disability. This year has been hell. I have watched as she has been, as she has balled her eyes out, been harassed, threatened and more. She was humiliated when she got called down to the office over the fake safe to say. That night she came to my house for two hours. She hyperventilated, cried, sweated and almost threw up, afraid she was going to lose wrestling. Fast forward, she came home, told her mom she was involved in a group chat and the name of that chat that she didn't want to be a part of, am I allowed to swear if it's a quote? All right. The name of the group chat was Kira's a fucking pussy. You are an autistic retard? We're going to beat your ass and if you come out of your ass, you'll be shot. There's videos of her walking home so that other attackers can see what she's wearing and the route she takes. Friday morning, as my family has told you, she was hit in school and we got the call. I know you have a lot of kids in this school, but sometimes I have to be a cop for 11,000 people by myself. And when somebody says they're being threatened, we show extra presence. You all have a copy of her schedule, you can say, hey, today, security, when she gets out, how about we just float the area? You don't just show that you're there for her, just be present. This girl came into a caf, she snuck out of class, went down the hall, was seen, not escorted back to class, trusted to go back, was seen to enter a cafeteria she was not supposed to be in, had time to sit down, mingle with other people, set up a camera and go hit Kira. And Kira was forced to defend herself, which you did a great job. If this bully comes back to school, we are pulling our daughter from here and it will become very public that the no place for hate is a place for hate and there's no place for a victim. Look at your bully procedures and policies and give it a full reamp.
John Amy.
I have nothing to say.
Board comment? Just driving away. Ms. Nyman.
I'd like to say no, but after that, I think this is something that we really need to look into ASAP. And I hope, Mr. Saltanik, you will help us with that.
Quick and sweet, I want to thank the foundation for Borotown.